Everyone ready? Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continued meetings, at least three working days in advance, by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body, that no clerk at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Jackson, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel, on April 2nd, 2019 for item one, and April 12th for items two and three, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria of Virginia Code, Chapter 37.
Thank you very much. I call this meeting to order. All right, well, welcome back, everybody, from break. I hope everyone had some time to rest and relax and be with family and friends. I know we're very excited because between now and June, it's the home stretch.
Approximately thirty-seven days.
Thirty-seven days.
Not that would be counted.
No. My math is so ill.
That's a good number to keep in mind, thirty-seven. So, we have a couple of items that we're going to be discussing in our workshop portion today before we enter into our closed session and then into our formal meeting at seven o'clock. The first item on the agenda is an item that primarily rests with the board, and that is our advisory committees. And for some time, we've had some small discussions about our advisory committees when we decided to appoint some board members to the committees, but we really haven't had the opportunity as an entire board to talk about what they are, how they function, what they're doing, and are we good with what they're doing, or would we like to get a better understanding and maybe change some things? And so, I really appreciate the work that Ms. Jackson did to put some information together that was, most of it was in existence within Board Docs, but other items had to be assimilated. And so, Ms. Jackson, thank you very much, and Mr. Butts also, for getting the information together. But basically, policy-wise, we have, we have four committees that are under what we would call advisory committees to the board, and that would be your gifted advisory committee, your student health advisory committee, your, let's see here, get my notes out here, special education advisory committee, and the CTE advisory committee. And those four items are determined through policy. The other areas that we have in which we've solicited some valuable stakeholder input would be some of the task forces that have come up, and those would be like your equity task force, our safe schools task force, we had an educational planning committee that came together, and even today, Ms. Basine reminded me that we had a open campus advisory group. So, I think it's really important that we start a discussion today. This discussion today is not going to be the be-all, end-all. I would see it as a series of discussions leading up to July, to where we can have an opportunity to kind of regroup and hear the input that we have all been able to gather as we discuss about this collectively and see what we want to do moving forward from July, if there are any changes that we would like to make as a board. So, I hope that everyone has had the opportunity to at least review some of the committees and what they are, how they function. I had several thoughts going forward, just focusing on the committees at this point in time, and so, what I'd first like to do, if there are any comments from board members, I'll entertain those comments and then I will make my suggestions. Ms. Campson?
I'm concerned about the status of the safe school task force. The board voted to have that task force, to have the superintendent form that task force back in September, and we still don't have one.
I can answer that, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Campson is exactly right. Through a series of illnesses and other issues, we have not finalized that, but by Monday, Ms. Campson and Ms. Martin will have the framework for that, as well as a draft of a letter that can be signed by Ms. Martin, and I think she's chairing that group, to go out to the recommended members and see if you have any additional members that you would like to have included.
Thank you.
Being uncertain as to what our goal, or what we hope to accomplish today with the discussion, I just had some things that I feel that we should include as part of our ongoing discussion around this, which is around the vacancies of each of the committees. And I know we've had instances where we have members of the same family who are part of the advisory committee, like husband and wife, or parent-child, and how to possibly, do our policies need to address that, so that as far as voting members go, and so that we can ensure that we have the geographic representation from across the city, that our membership isn't, you know, comprised of multiple members of the same family. I think that's been a situation a couple of times on different advisory committees, including GEAC and CEAC. I know we've had a couple of, you know, instances where we're grateful for the participation, of course, but I think to ensure the geographic representation, I think that's something we ought to consider as we try to fill those vacancies.
Can I ask for clarification by what do you mean by consider? You didn't say to have or to not have, or to what, to consider?
Consider not having multiple members of the same family be voting members of the advisory committee. So, that is, that's one point, but if you want to clarify today, what we, because I'm looking at too what our assignments were back in August, I think we determined what our assignments are, and I guess, starting with, are we, is everyone assigned to them? Do we want to, the, I think, there's been an overarching question, do we want to have committees, and if so, which standing committees are we committed to, which ones do we feel may, may not?
Well, before we get into that, what we're discussing today are the four committees by policy, and we know that we also have, and we have an equity task force, we have the safe schools task force, and we have the educational planning committee. I don't, I don't anticipate us getting into those at this point today because we have a fairly packed schedule, but what I would like for us to start with is our advisory committees. Now, by law, and Dr. Boone, you can correct me, Mr. Jordan also has experience with this, Mr. Cloud, we are supposed to have the student health advisory committee, the gifted, and the special education and career. I think by law, we're supposed to have all of them, and so, I don't think we have an option as to whether or not we want them or not, but when we were assigning board members to the committees at the beginning, I think everybody was just kind of getting, you know, assigned to something that they might be interested in. But now that we've had a whole year to kind of be a part of the meetings, kind of understand them, you've been able to glean some information, and part of what you have brought up is a significant concern that I have, and that is the vacancies that we have. Several committees, I've noted when we've received some of the rosters, all of their members are due to expire this year, and so, we need to figure out a way, how are we going to be advertising, accepting applications, approving applications, you know, what is going to be our process for that? And, and Mr. Jordan, I'm going to get to you for a second, but I also want us to be very comfortable as a board, understanding that we have a, we have policy BCF, and then we have the policies underneath of that, that talks about the different committees. And I was confused even looking at that, to understand where does, where does the board fall in approving application processes versus within some of the policies, they say that there's a recommendation that comes forward from the superintendent, so there's a lot of variability there. I would like for us to be consistent. I would like for all the committees to be consistent, only because now we are, we have a board that's going to be changing over, you know, at times, and the best thing that we can do is at least leave some best practices for, for the group, so that way, no matter if we're in the seat or not, that things can still continue, and there's a set guideline in place. So, that's where I'd like to start the discussion. Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I just wanted to piggyback on what you've said thus far. So, the committees that you are referencing by policy are really driven by the state code, and then our BCF policy then speaks to what the code says, and then also some values that we have on top of it. So, I think we need to, if we're going to focus on the four, then maybe take a moment to get some understanding of what the state requirements or federal requirements may be for each of those committees and what's required, because I think when we speak to those four, and then we start talking about task forces and other things, it gets a little confusing. The reason the equity task force is also in the policy is because in the equity, in equity policy, it called for the establishment of the task force, and so, that's where that link is, because just like the other four, it's in policy, and then equity task force is in policy. What we established over time as a board, we wanted to try to make sure that as the board made appointments, that we would do the best we could to have this cross-representation of stakeholders that participate. I think in the instance of the SHAC, we just need to get some clarity, because I think from the state regs is why it says that the superintendent does an appointment versus others. And then, what we worked on, if you look at the current BCF that you have, we tried to make the process more flexible for the board. So, at one time, in a previous version of the policy, it said we would try to make appointments by February timeframe, and we had to do it by April, and that was just restrictive. So, the way the policy reads now, it just simply indicates that, at least as I read it, that the board can make appointments, you know, when the board feels it's appropriate. The board would obviously consult with the superintendent and others as part of doing that, that we would have a online and printed application, so any citizen that wanted to participate would know where to go and how to submit their interest, and whenever the board felt it was appropriate to make appointments, whether it's because of vacancies or not, we could do that. The other piece of that that kind of grew over time, especially with the gifted and the CEAC, they had developed their own bylaws, which they had the right to do, so we worked to try to align, to make sure that, because they are there in the midst of it, that if they knew that Tom Jones is going to no longer serve for some reason other than expiration of term, that the advisory committees themselves could also make recommendations to the board for the board to approve. So, that's kind of where that process is in the, finally, in the instance of like with the, the safety task force, and I may not saying it exactly right, the safe schools task force, we were, you know, one time, we were looking at the book, What School Boards Can Do, when we were developing the policy committee, and within that framework, it made recommendations where the superintendent or the board may establish an ad hoc committee, so it would, you know, it starts at a certain time, ends at a certain time. And so, when we were having the discussion around the task force for safe schools, we came forward with the recommendation, they defined their purpose and goals, we wanted to see it populated and executed. We hadn't talked about whether or not they come, they do their, their job, and they end, or whether or not, I said, we have not, my point is, my point is, is that we had not put into policy to say whatever it is that we wanted. So, if we wanted the safe schools task force, or at one time, where we had the open campus task force, all that stuff is, you know, should, should be codified, in my opinion, within the policy, so it's clear moving forward.
So, I have a suggestion, then. I think that you bring up some, some good points, and I think that what we should do is put together a smaller group of the board. I'm thinking of Mr. Clayton, and if you would like to work together, to work on what those, the state code is, on the advisory committees that are set forth by code, and then come back to the board for some recommendations on how, what are the absolutes that we have to have, how that aligns with our policies, but what I would like to see is some type of continuity with attendance or roster, if we're going to decide to collect minutes during the committees, where that's going to be kept, and how that's going to be shared with the board, and then, let me see, it's down here, and then a timeline for, for application. And if the board feels that we want to just take applications on an ongoing basis, we can discuss that, but if we would like to have a process in place, whereas applications are advertised for all committees, let's say, July, and we make appointments in September, and they do their term, you know, I want to have that discussion with everyone. And then, we only fill as needed based on vacancies, because someone has to leave their position, they're moving, they're sick, et cetera. So, I want us to have those discussions. So, do you two feel comfortable researching that and maybe coming back with some practices?
Yeah, I'm willing to do it.
How does everyone else feel about that?
I don't have a problem.
Rodney, right?
No, no, no. I don't have a problem doing that, except that, I mean, at one point, that's what the policy committee was doing, but I don't have a problem doing it, because we did it before. But I don't want to, I don't want to step on whatever work that the policy committee would normally do, because that's part of what their function is.
I'll be happy to, to give you all, you know, to get and give to you all the statutes and regulations involved.
Yeah, I mean, they're right there in the policy.
Yeah.
I think they're all referenced.
Yeah.
And if I could, in, in the discussion, it was mentioned earlier that a couple of groups have bylaws, and that's somewhat established through best practices, I think the CEAC has bylaws.
And the GEAC.
And GEAC, and so, when, when you do that work, if you look at what's there too, because those bylaws are kind of, have been supported in a template from the state in terms of practices.
Okay.
Can I add one other thing? Is the timeline on what is expected of them throughout that year appointment? So, if there are reports that they need to deliver, or things that they need to do to give them some goals, right?
That's good, because, for example, the special education committee, we have the letter that comes for the adoption of the, of the plan, so that would be important for them to know.
Yeah, GEAC, just the same thing. We have our local plan, and they take a piece of it and monitor how well it's being implemented and provide us with a report.
And I believe some of that is in the code section that Mr. Cloud referenced for those groups.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I'd very much like to see if they're meeting every month, that we get some type of minutes, so that the boards brought up the speed, and then, as we build the annual calendar, that we allow an opportunity for all of them to be able to come in at some particular point and report out to us, just their status where they are.
And celebrate the fact that they are volunteering their time for this, and we greatly appreciate it. So, we can work on that, too.
One thing on the, on the minutes piece, and Dr. Gabriel, you probably remember in the past, we've invited, we would have what we used to call chat and choose, we would invite, I know, that's why, that we were inviting members of the CEAC or GEAC or other committees to come and present annually to the board. I, I want caution about the advisory committees having a responsibility of reporting their minutes to the school board. I think we should allow the advisory committees to do their work, depending upon what's required, like I'm looking at the policy for the special education advisory committee, and it spells out that, you know, there's expectation that they will do certain things, will do an annual review of the local plan and so forth. I think that there should be some level of buffer, so the advisory committees, as they're doing their sausage-making, and going through the work that they're doing, and wanting to then come with a final recommendation to the board, that they can do that without kind of opening up their work to board engagement, because otherwise, I mean, it's just like with us, you can get a set of minutes, it doesn't necessarily always give you full context, and, and different groups meet on different schedules, some may meet monthly, some may meet twice a year. So, I think for them to have a place where they can have repositories for, for their work, I think is good. I'm a little reticent about.
I don't think we have to be prescriptive right now. I think that can be something that you two discuss.
No, no. My only point was, is that if the, if the work of the committees, of the advisory committees to the board, gets subjected to review and inspection by the board, it opens up the opportunity then for the board to get engaged with the work of the advisory committees before they have decided what recommendation they want to give forward. And the way that we tried to provide some continuity, or at least some communication, was while we established liaisons, so we said that board members could attend committee meetings as liaisons, they didn't vote, they didn't count as a quorum, but they were there. And so, as part of board members giving reports back to the board, there was an opportunity for the board members to say, hey, this is what's happening with GEAC, give you a heads-up, versus, in my view, kind of subjecting them to inspection before they may not be ready. And this is my, my take on it.
Question, excuse me, about the operation of the board. So, I would assume that the board member who is, has volunteered to work with that particular advisory committee would be a listener, they would not be running the committee, they would not be determining the direction, they would just be there as an observer, and so that they know that there's an interest from the board.
Yeah.
All right, and second of all, I can understand what you're saying about the minutes, that makes perfect sense. However, asking for an agenda?
Yeah.
Or something to just document the meeting and what was going on in the meeting?
Agenda, who was there?
Yeah, the agenda and the roster.
That's, yeah.
Would be perfectly reasonable to have that come in.
Yeah, making sure that there's the work in the, that the advisory committees are functioning the way that they're supposed to function. And, and I, I wouldn't have an objection to what Mr. Jordan is saying, and I completely understand the context of allowing the advisory committees to be able to do their work, but then I think that it's really important then, that at the beginning of the year, we know what the objectives are for the year, and that there's some set time that we've identified in our calendar, where those advisory committees are giving us an update towards like the end of the year and a recap for us, and I think that that's really important, that we place that in there.
Some of them have even.
And then, we might have one work session where we have, someone from each of the advisory committees have fifteen or twenty minutes to just give us a report out, it could be the May work session or something.
Okay, Ms. Basine?
I, I want to say I, I second that idea, because I think the gap with our committees is the feedback loop.
Yeah.
Is that we've been getting the reports and the annual plans, and we, it's clear that the work is being done during the year, but then, one of the things that I've been hearing at least is that, okay, well, now what? You know, so what is the board going to do with this information?
Yeah.
And to have that, to feel like, I think, I think that's where our current gap is in terms of what next.
Because even some of them have even wanted to meet board and board, you know? So, I mean, maybe we have a day where we, you know, do advisory committee day, and we just hear from everyone, and we, we work on that feedback loop, you know?
Or I like that idea, with fifteen, you know, have them, have a report out.
So.
But I'd also, in just looking at some of the information there, the point of really stressing about identifying a diverse group.
Yes.
I saw way too many of repetition of the same names, it almost looked like it was almost sort of planted where there were consistent names that were across the board. I believe in a district in a city of this size, that we could find individuals who want to be engaged, and we should really be stressing that to the community.
Geographically as well.
As well.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And, and that's one of the greatest challenges, you know, even with, particularly when we think about the Special Education Advisory Council, you know, we send messages to parents, we try to engage them, and they, I couldn't agree more that we, we need to, to bring them aboard and get a, a more diverse group, but it is a challenge, that we, you know, we've changed meeting times and days in order to try to better accommodate families, and just getting that, that participation and sustained participation is always a challenge.
Dr. Boone, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just, before I lose this here, do you think that it might be, might be, if we could, as a district, maybe we hold an orientation or just an interest meeting for individuals, what it means to serve on one of these advisory committees, something that, not just an application, but we make it really plain to folks, so that it doesn't seem intimidating, and that we, you know, we partner with our PTAs or whatever else, and we have a day that people can come in and learn about what it means to serve on one of those, you know, on one of our advisory committees, maybe.
The task force.
Or, or one of the task forces.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly. Certainly can do that. I know the individual groups have done that, and, you know, we reach out to parents and things, say, hey, we, we're looking for your membership, this is what it is, we sometimes do it through the Blackboard Connect phone messages, written messages, and invite parents to come to the various meetings to do that, but I, I think every option should be tried.
I agree, and to pick, oh, hold on, let me go Adele, and then you.
So, I just want to go off of what Dr. Boone was saying about participation, just speaking as a liaison to the Special Education Advisory Committee, couple of things. One is that it's very difficult for some of these families to attend these meetings, and so, what I've seen over the past years, that while there've been, there's been a lot of effort, and it's been successful to, to get more participation this year, they have a long way to go, and that sometimes, particularly in this being to Ms. Basine's point, is that we do have some parents as couples who are on that committee, so that they can be available and be active while also attending to their families. So, they switch on, on and off, sometimes they can both make it, a lot of times they can't, and so, it's very important to this committee that they're there, and, but also, going to that point with, with getting the word out and having a big meeting, the special advisory committee has been, has made several attempts to do, and talked a lot about having coffee hour and having different meetings, they are very open to that, but also, just to keep in the mind, convenience is really important, and so, it's not always convenient for them to have, to attend these, or especially if we want to branch out, to attend a meeting on what does it mean to be on a committee and how, what that process is. I would recommend that we make it, do a video on that and post that. I think we will reach a broader population that way.
All right. So, do you think the two of you can come back with some recommendations by our next formal meeting in May? I think it's May fifteenth.
The business meeting?
Fifteenth, the business meeting. Refresh on what the recommendations are for.
So, that's only three weeks. That's only three weeks. I'm just saying, because normally it would be four weeks, because we are weak.
Just these two. Do you think you guys can?
Yeah, you know it, works for me.
You know?
We can do it.
Keep the.
Can you just, just make sure you send us what your, what the board's expectations are?
So, the first thing is look at the code, look at the code, and see how the code aligns with our policies, okay?
Okay.
Current vacancies and attendance, and where we are with that. We need to have, come back with some recommendation on minutes, agenda, something, on where we, they can submit it to Board Docs. On where we, they can submit it to board docs or submit it to the board, submit it to Ms. Jackson.
What I'm hearing is consistency across the committees, right?
To the extent possible.
So just, just so that, you know, I know that there have been, we, we approved some applications for CAC. Maybe February, a couple of months ago, because there were several vacancies. I think GAC has a number of vacancies that they were trying to get applications through. I know that the SHAC has a vacancy, has vacancies and there is an individual who has submitted an application. So, Dr. Boone, any thoughts on a recommendation on that application?
I, I think, I wait to see what will come through this. So we're not doing it in a fragmented piece, whatever the consensus or recommendations they come back with. And then if they are needed for adjustments or whatever, we can.
Okay, all right.
If I can, if you have applications that have been submitted, if you can share it with us.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Because I assume part of our task will be to go and see if we, what are geographic and other criteria, are they being met? And so we would be able to come back and say, here are the gaps that we see, here are the applications we've received thus far, do they fill those gaps? And then going back to the earlier suggestions, if we're truly going to give the community at large an opportunity to, to apply, we may want to make sure that we do some of that before we just start taking the two or three that may have already applied. I don't know what it looks like, but if you send those to us, we can figure it out.
Just one that I know of and I'm, I'll send that out, I know that she has, she's made a request. And so I'll, I'll, I'll send that out. Just because I don't know what our, our end timeframe is going to be, being that there are some vacancies there, if the board would be willing to, you know, consider an approval at that point, then we can, we can consider it. But I'll get the application out to everybody to make sure that you guys can see it and review it.
So the applications now for the advisory committees, it's the same application for each committee? It's like a, there's like a universal application?
Well, that was, that was part of the confusion because there wasn't. It, it, we really didn't know where it was. But now there is an application that Ms. Jackson has that is standard for it, so.
And that's the same one that we had in place?
Right.
Because when the committee work was done a couple of years, the school board work was done on this with policy, a couple, three years ago, that's when that, that application form was, was developed, I believe.
Yeah, we just need to make sure everybody knows where it is.
And it's a set criteria also for the applicants? Is there a set criteria across the committees or is there, or is it unique to a different committee?
Well, it's a set, there's a set, sorry, I have it up.
Is that for the policy?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, so yes, to answer your question.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that's going to be part of their discussion. And so as we make things continuous, what are, we, we know that we want to have diversity, we want to know we have geographical representation. We want to address some of the, you know, issues that, you know, Ms. Basine brought up, you know, family members, whatnot. And I think that will come out of our further discussions.
But everybody has seen the application of the board, you all have seen the application.
Has everyone seen it?
I saw it a while ago, I didn't look for it at it for this meeting. Can I just make a comment about the application? One of the comments from early on in the year with the special education advisory committee meeting, we're looking to, we're looking at the same issue, how do we create a more diverse representation on, at the, on the CAC? And there was one comment made that some people, this was one of the members had got some feedback from some parents that they found the application to ask for too much information. So I just want to pass, make sure I pass that along to you all whenever you're looking at the applications and what that means. Maybe we need to modify that. You know, think about what is absolutely necessary.
So May fifteenth, check in.
I, I was just going to ask if, so the electronics, so those that are filling it out electronically? Did you receive the application electronically? Is it going to you or is it going to the school board clerk?
I'm.
That's the part I've been wondering.
Individual inquired about getting an application. And then I sent them to Ms. Jackson and Dr. Harold Lanz. And so I just said, whatever you got to do to figure out the application, figure it out. And then she had just copied me on it. And so I didn't know where we were in that process. Because according to the policy, it comes through recommendation of superintendent, the SHAC.
Yeah, yeah, but since it's a common application, you know, they can pull down, the pull down menu, you can select which committee.
I think there was even a difficult time figuring out where the application was. So, you know, that's okay.
I'd probably take that to Mr. Jordan, we probably have our initial meeting, just kind of looking back at what you've asked us for and then maybe we can generate, these are the things that we're going to be looking towards, working on by the fifteenth and then send that back out to the board and then you guys can way back in if there's additional things outside of that.
All right, great, thank you. Item two point oh two, annual career and technical education plan.
I'll ask Ms. Gosin to, to come to the table. As, as she comes, you recall last meeting, we presented the special education annual plan and application for certain funds. So we're in that cycle of the year when others come up. And so today's the Perkins Career and Tech Ed federal grant application. And so I'll ask Ms. Gosin to walk us through the information that she's providing and we are prepared to answer any questions.
Good afternoon to everyone. Fantastic spring break as we move forward towards the end of the school year. And thank you so much for having me. As Dr. Boone explained, the purpose for this presentation will be for the annual career and technical education plan, pre-K through twelve. Beginning with what the components of it will be. When we look at pre-K through twelve, we're talking about the CTE components that go along with Perkins. Carl Perkins was reauthorized last year for all effects to take place July one. It is now the strengthening the career and technical education for Twenty First Century Learning Act. Now it's known as Perkins Five. So we just came out of Perkins Four, we're now going into Perkins Five, which will take effect in July one. The components that are required in Perkins Five are already for the most part in place within our school division as we started restructuring and enhancing our programs in anticipation of the reauthorization, but most importantly, doing what's best for children. In our funnel, you will see the different components of Perkins as well as what's already in place for us. We have integrated academics, that means you're required to have your core academics integrated into career and technical education where those programs are high quality, high demand, based on labor workforce needs. And we do that through what used to be called Opportunity Inc., which is now Virginia Career Works. We look at the Labor Bureau and Statistics and we have input from our advisory. Work-based learning is in place within our division, industry certifications, professional development, career and technical student organizations are required, as well as ensuring that students are exposed to career awareness, exploration and development. One component up there that you will see, it states special populations. CTE is for all students, however, under Perkins, whether it's Perkins Two, Three, Four or Five, you are responsible for certain special populations. Special populations entails students that fall into the categories of socioeconomic, students with disabilities, English language learners, students who are single parents, not those who are from a single parent household, students who are single parents themselves, male or female, students who are not considered non-traditional, meaning if a student is enrolled in a class or going into a field where they, their gender representation is twenty-five percent or less, they're considered a non-traditional. Those fall under the old Perkins. In addition, Perkins Four has added on special population categories to include students who are homeless, students who are considered in foster care and those who are connected to parents who are on academic, excuse me, not academic, active military status, excuse me. And so although we service all students under Perkins federally, we are responsible for monitoring how those students are doing. Each and every year, we receive an annual performance report and we meet all standards that have been set for us. And that's for every school division in the state, fall under the same performance standards. In addition to some of the requirements of Perkins and some of the other things the state require, we are adding on a virtual learning program for all of our CTE programs as well as we have expanded and included dual enrollment. When you look at the Perkins Four budget, which was presented to each, to everyone via board docs, you have different categories. Last year, we received about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for Perkins. This year, we will be reduced by fifty-six thousand dollars. Perkins is made up of a formula where the federal government gives money to the state and the state uses a formula to allocate those funds to the different divisions. You look at a thirty percent of the money, they look at how many students are enrolled between grades nine and twelve, ages fifteen to nineteen. And then seventy percent of that formula comes from the number of students you have in your division who based on the census are considered to be at the poverty level, those between the ages of five and seventeen. Once that is allocated to us, you receive your allocation, then you write a plan that tells the state how you're going to use those funds via services, programs, activities, things of that nature. The idea of the Perkins, whether it's Four or Five, is to supplant, excuse me, to supplement and not supplant. So if we had something in our local budget, we can't say, take it off and put it into Perkins, we cannot supplant. When you look at how we are using our funds, and it's already in the plan that you received, but I gave you a graphic here, it breaks down into different categories. On the screen, you'll see fifteen percent goes to personal services. With Perkins, once you get your allocation, it's called a sixty forty split. Sixty percent is required, it tells you what you use it for. Forty percent is permissive, things that give you a list of how you can use it outside of the required. Fifteen percent will go to personal services. Those are things that teachers are carrying out above and beyond normal duty that they may be paid for. We're looking to add a position because there are a lot of new requirements that's coming into play with Perkins, especially where it comes to work-based learning. Our per, our program is growing tremendously. We're also looking at adding career guidance, we have amazing school counselors. However, we need someone focused on career literacy and career focus. In the past, we've been partnering with some of our advisory members, whether it's TCC or some of the other universities, to provide that. But as their plate has become full with other things, we have less and less time for that. So we need someone in place who's managing all of those students who are out on work-based learning. Also, we need someone working for post-secondary transitions, helping our students get through grades nine through twelve, but also understanding the careers that come beyond, the opportunities and endeavors come beyond. That's where personal services come into play. Contracted services is what we pay outside vendors in order for our students to participate in certain things. For example, credentials. Unlike the SOL, that's kind of owned by the state, private industries own all of the certifications that are taken by the students. We have to pay for that. So that's where that comes in. Students traveling to competitions, we have some that are going to Orlando in June, California, you name it, every state, you name it. Our kids are winning state competitions, now they're going on to represent the state nationally. That's where that, those funds come from. Also, as we move from textbooks to online information and the books become online, we have to pay for licensing, whether we're doing AutoCAD or anything like that, that would be considered a contract services. When you look at other services, that's for internal, when we have to pay for buses and things of that nature to get children where they need to be. When you look at fifty-nine percent of what we do going towards capital outlet equipment and technology, I want to make sure everyone understands, capital outlay is not buildings or anything like that. You're not allowed to build anything with Perkins. It's equipment that comes in that makes sure that your students are being trained on the equipment that's being used in the industry. It's for technology, smart boards, computers, iPads, things of that nature. When you see the robots and all of that, that's exactly what that does. And what you have seen is the breakdown of it that's in the Perkins plan. It tells you exactly how much is going where. So again, it's a sixty forty split. If you ever go above that forty percent, then your budget tells you and it just kicks it right back. So we always operate within. Perkins budget is just a little bit different than some of the other grants. There are certain times of year that you spend the funds. For example, right now, you may see, and you'll see it later on, there's about three hundred and some odd thousand dollars left. And one would say, oh my gosh, why do they have so much money left at the end of the year? That's because there's certain times of year you spend. We get thirty percent of the money in July for Perkins, seventy percent comes in October. However, I'll take contract services. You have fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars set aside for students to take credentials. That only occurs April, May, in the first week in June. There are windows in which we test. Also with Perkins, a lot of things that we do, they're expended, the children do things and then your bill towards the end of the year. So the most of our money start to come off at the end of the year and you'll see as it goes down. Also with Perkins, whether, regardless of what year it is, if you have other grants that have been given to you by the state, you expend and reimburse those before you can reimburse for Perkins. So during the bulk of the beginning of the year, we're having to spend some of the other funds that are given to us and then we go ahead and we move forward with Perkins. So our numbers don't go down as quickly and then you'll see now we have X amount, but then maybe a month later, it's all gone because students are now testing, they're also now traveling and that's where all the money is, is going. As we move with Perkins, we also look at making sure it's aligned with needs. So the budget is based on the needs assessment that we've gotten the data from last year and this year. Input into the budget or anything that you've seen into the plan comes together through our advisory committee, which is our overarching committee. Ours is a little bit different than the others. In your federal plan, it's spelled out, your component, you have to have X number of individuals from business and industry, X from community, students, teachers, parents, X official members. We have one advisory committee that works very well, chaired by TCC, our chairman for this year. Then we have subcommittees. Because we have sixteen different clusters, there's no way one committee can do it all. So we have subcommittees that work on those different areas you see and then they report back to that one advisory and they meet quarterly. So the subcommittees meet more frequently. It's very hard when you're bringing in CEOs and chairmen of different organizations to meet every month. But your subcommittee can go in and do that smaller work and then report back and then as a whole. No one CTE committee can be a expert on all of the sixteen different clusters, so those subcommittees help us. Extend beyond that are the teacher committees and then the student advisory that all feed into one, that help to develop the plan or any programming that you may have for CTE.
Before we go on, can we see if there's any questions from the members?
I did have one, I'm just.
Which slide?
It was back to the, I guess you can go back to the pot, the funding. I just noted that you said that there was a reduction of fifty-six thousand dollars, I know there was a formula. And so I was just trying to figure out, did we identify what particular items may have contributed to the reduction of fifty-six thousand?
We have a reduced number of enrollment, as our enrollment goes down, that's where the funding.
Overall for the school district?
That's where the funding goes down.
Got it.
And then also the census, because the census determines the level of poverty within our division and so the reports on that. But it's enrollment in our programs, enrollment in the school division and students between the ages of five and seventeen who are considered to be at or below the level of poverty.
I just want to do a parking lot on the census at some point about talking about that and if we're being strategic and working with the city and others, if that's coming up for that count, just.
We will, we, we have it at this point, but we definitely always support that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, can you go back to the, this, the last slide you were on that was dealing with the, that slide right there? Since we were just talking about advisory committees, can you just take a moment and talk about the organic nature of how you, the site coordinator, other partners are out there doing all this work and how that creates networks and connectivities that allow you to engage others to come to the table to support your, these committees and the work?
Well, we are very fortunate to have some amazing champions, that champion. Well, we are very fortunate to have some amazing champions. That champions many of the efforts that we have. And although our committee will say that you had, you need three businesses in order to have an advisory, we probably have ten or twelve. And what we do is, the same way that everyone follows their processes and procedures, they apply. And so they go through and they apply, and we explain how you need different areas. We advertise for our programs. For example, Greater Norfolk Corporation works closely with us. We have a lot of members from there. We have a lot of members from the Workforce Council. And what we do is to make sure that everyone comes to table, understanding they all are from equal value. And the great thing about it is, it's not just an advisory that comes and meet. They are guest teachers, they are mentors, they are champions, they raise funds, they provide things, you name it, they're there. And so for our advisory, once you're on this CTE advisory committee and you're part of that whole group, we figure out where your area of expertise may be. And we have a representative who is from Centerra. So that person will chair the subcommittee where it deals with health and medical sciences. A person who is from Virginia Ship Repair Association, that individual chair the Trades and Industrial Subcommittee. If we, we have a Business and IT Committee, that's either Hamilton Booth Allen, or someone from ADP, or someone from Dominion Enterprises. And they're able to bring in individuals within their industry that really knows deeply what each of those areas happen to be. They go through an entire year of doing work. For example, Business and IT, about two weeks ago, that group came in and looked at the curriculum related to information technology, looking at the equipment, helping us to set up right now our job shadowing day, working with us to get other businesses to come on board, so our students will have a place to do their internship. They raise funds for scholarships. So it's really a good web of bringing individuals to the table, working in the best interest of students. But again, it's not just businesses. We have parents' representatives, elementary, middle, and high. We have students, and we have other individuals who may not fall in this area, who are community interest members. And they come together, and we set a plan at the beginning of the year. So in March, we decided what they're going to work on for next year. They're going to work on workplace readiness skills. That is an area of need in our school, where our teachers are not sure how to quote-unquote "teach" that. They're going to take on the community, uh, they're going to take on the curriculum writing, the pacing, the job shadowing, work-based learning. They also come in and they talk to us about our industry. They look at our data. We open our data. We open our doors. They do walkthroughs, you name it.
So can I ask a question? The application process for the businesses, they, they come per recommendation from Dr. Boone, or from you?
Yeah, most of our individuals may have been on, with the exception of about three or four, were pre the application.
Okay.
So the, we have some who have done the application now, and some who are rotating off because they were before the application. But it's done the same way. They completed the application, and then what they were, they were submitted to Dr. Boone, and I think there were some others who may, was on the board at the time. They had a chance to talk with some individuals. Also, sometimes when someone's rotating off, they may recommend someone. Because it's very specific, it's very hard, like for example, Centerra, at the point, former president of Centerra Norfolk General was able to recommend someone, and we would get them that way. Virginia Ship Repair Association, if there's, if it's their time to rotate off, they may recommend someone, or they may contact someone. Because we are so specialized, that's one of the better ways to do it. However, we've had parents to apply, and they are on board, and they turn out to be an IT person. Our number-one IT person is a parent of an ADL student in Amory. Well, he's been with us since they were, some, uh, the Amory student was in middle school, and the other one was in elementary. And so it really just depends. Our mentors, our volunteers, sometimes they end up in the advisory. It's just really a good networking when you have a strong advisory.
Yeah, I agree.
I have a question. So I'm hearing a lot of talk about the industry and connecting to the CTE, but at the higher grade levels. Can, this presentation says pre-K through twelve. Can you talk more about how they're impacting the elementary school?
Well, remember, Perkins up until this year was grades seven through twelve. It has only been authorized to go to grades five and six, but we do not stop there. Every single school division is responsible for career exploration, awareness, and development. So at the elementary levels, they all do career fairs. Everybody does a career fair. Everyone does academic counseling with their students. That's most appropriate to their level. For pre-K, we have a pre-K program at Norfolk Technical Center, and that started way before we did mixed pre-K in the division. It is part of our CTE program, where our high school students become quote-unquote "teachers" to those pre-K students. And what we've done is, Tyewater Community College in the past, Old Dominion and others, come in and work with our children on how to work with the pre-K students. Now, you have programs such as Project Lead the Way, that has now expanded down to pre-K. So then those students will be exposed to the STEM that's on their level. Elementary is the same way. Now we have an opportunity to use federal funds to put that back. If you think about some of the things that may be done in DODIA, we're trying to do the same thing at the non-military, uh, connected schools. And so elementary has coding, elementary has introduction to computer science and cyber literacy, but it's on their level. When you move up to middle school, we just restructure, restructured the entire middle school programming. So we call it, they went from keyboarding to coding in one year, because traditionally, they did a lot of exploratory. We no longer do that. They're doing introduction to computer science, they're doing digital mobile applications, they're doing higher-level STEM. The good thing is, we've done this, so starting from pre-K up, we're building a pipeline of a stronger group of students. So when you get to high school, they're not just being exposed to it, it becomes second nature. So a pre-K, elementary, middle, and high will all be exposed to career and technical education. And in the elementary, they now, in the state code, they have to do their academic career plan portfolios. Middle school must do academic career planning, as well as the high schools.
Right. So does the, um, does the Perkins Five Grant, does it say, have anything in there to talk, to teach, train these young children, students about the safety and security of using the online tools?
Mm-hmm. That's what normally, when you look at digital, digital literacy and cyber literacy for elementary, that's really what it is. You're looking at not making programs and algorithms, you're looking at more, how do I safety, how do I safely go online and search? How do I friend someone safely? What are the different social media elementary? Very introductory. Okay, and I won't spend a lot of time on the next couple of slides. It is just for your information. Each program has a cluster. We have information technology cluster, we have STEM clusters. Perkins requires that you have eleven different courses at every school with at least three pathways. We far exceed that. We have about ninety different programs going on, excuse me, courses going on throughout the division. One example is information technology that Perkins helps to support. If someone's taking computer information systems as an entry level, they can matriculate up through here. Everyone that is getting certain types of diplomas must have sequences, and as well as the CCCR for accreditation of high schools, you have to have students who participate in sequencing, as well as work-based learning experiences. This is where they can achieve that. We have dual enrollment offered in these programs, if you notice. We didn't have that many years ago. Now, we're up through computer information systems. We're doing programming, and we have the AP Computer Science Principles course, but also some of our programming and other students take AP, the AP exam. Cybersecurity was brand-new for us this year. We've done very well with working with Norfolk State and some of the other programs. We're partnering with Apple on some new things, so you'll hear more great things about that. And that is continuing with our initiative of Computer Science for All. You have the STEM cluster. This is the, the things in the circle are the entry level, and this is the higher-level courses. They can go up to and through. Again, there are some, if you see MS, that means that those are high school credit-bearing courses being taught at the middle school level. Again, we are creating a stronger pipeline, so students can come up and access higher-level STEM programming through modern simulation, you name it. It is all offered for them. Business and hospitality cluster, you have your marketing, where they do social media marketing, sports, sports management, your culinary. We're moving into restaurant management, but we also have culinary one, two, three, where they go out and do dual enrollment with TCC. And nutrition and wellness is at the middle school level. Health and medical sciences at the high school level, and this is outside of Amory. At the house, high school level, including Amory High School, you have sports medicine, and that is in collaboration with athletics, with the athletic trainers. So now they are becoming assistant athletic trainers, and they will do work-based learning. They'll have uniforms, and they will work the games as assistant athletic trainers. So that is a great thing that will be coming forward, and we're partnering with one of the healthcare industries that work very strongly with sports medicine, helping our students to do internships there. At the Technical Center, we continue to have dental, nursing, pharmacy, and clinical medical assistant, where they can earn their license for industry. They take it at the end of their program.
I think you're going to get to this towards the end, and I can't wait for that, but my question is more geared towards, how do we measure the success of Norfolk Public School students who have participated in this program, and not just the credentials that they receive, but actual placement and earning a, hopefully, living wage from these credentials and participating in the program?
I'll get that at the very last slide, but that's an excellent question. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Campson?
That was the same, same thing.
That was her, okay.
Can you touch on also if any of these programs are also done at night?
If the programs are done at night?
Right, because, because...
For adults?
We're just talking about students K through twelve, the Perkins. It doesn't cover any of the night school stuff, correct, for the, for CTE?
Yeah, there's a, there's a separate grant for that, but it allows you to work and transition some students through. And when we get to the work-based learning, I'll explain. Because some of our students, once they graduate, they transition into our adult programs, where they continue to work towards a higher level of licensure, where it's mastery, journeyman, and then on to mastery, which allows them to earn a higher wage. But some of these programs also are offered at night. For example, clinical medical assistant, pharmacy technician.
Yeah, I think we, we met one of the young men who was doing HVAC when we did the tour.
Yeah. And I, I know tonight, they're doing the graduation ceremony.
I was going to say, I'm missing it.
The graduation ceremony for the...
Now that you brought that up, I'm missing it. The nurses are graduating, you see.
The nurses are graduating tonight, which is great. Okay, go ahead.
And work-based learning. Work-based learning is, is very important, and it's more than just a graduation requirement. In order for our students to be successful, they need to be introduced to the particular field of interest, whether they're going directly to work into college or the military. These are the different levels of work-based learning experience that we currently offer. Last year, we had over three hundred and twenty-five students to participate. We expect to exceed that. Students have an opportunity to do service learning, which is totally different from community service. Service learning and community service, it's community service if they go out and they clean up or something, that's community service. Service learning is, the students must identify an issue, a societal issue, and work with an agency within a community in order to come up with a way to solve that. For example, the public service that's being done by the carpentry program, where they are building the libraries to help increase the reading levels of individuals, not only in our division, but throughout the entire city.
That's those little libraries.
The little libraries. They were featured not only at the school board meeting, but they're also featured in the Norfolk's TV. And they've gotten a lot of feedback from them, where individuals are now asking them to build miniature libraries. Our health and medical science students are working with different agencies in geriatrics, coming up with ways when individuals are working through adjusting to dementia or Alzheimer's. And they're making up memory boards to help individuals how to do that. They're doing various different things of teaching adults how to read. So that's service learning. Mentorship is not when they are mentor, a mentor, they are being mentored. They are the mentee. Job shadowing, we will have job shadowing day in May, where the community is coming together, business community is coming together to match up over a hundred different students with business owners, employers, employees, where they can shadow them for a portion of the day across various fields. Some are being done here at Norfolk Public Schools, some are going out. One example of Norfolk Public Schools would be carpentry, if, with Mr. Danny Johnson. If there's an open work order at a school, and the student's in a carpentry program, that's who's going to show up to help the Norfolk Public Schools employee fix that. IT is the same way, Jesse Zamora, you name it, we have all of them. Centerra is going to help us place the nursing students, but also the first-year nursing students out with nurses to job shadow for the day. So we're excited about that. Internships, we have paid and non-paid internships for our students.
Do you have a date for that in May?
I will have to get that to you, because they're doing it over a week, but it's the last week in May. And the business community and our advisory is taking the charge and leading that. And they're going to give out the flyers, and it will be posted on our school division's website. But because it's so many students, they're having to break it up. They had one day, and then it, reality sat into them. You can't do it in one day with children. Stuff happens with children. But, so internships, paid and non-paid. Right now, we work with Go Virginia to help with internships, and our students are not paid, but they receive incentives. And so they have, each student will receive three hundred dollars for doing a thirty-hour IT incentive, thirty-hour incentivized internship. So that's a great thing. You work thirty hours and you get three hundred dollars. That's pretty good. They can do it either in the summer or the last two weeks of school. Then we have cooperative education, clinicals, specifically for health and medical sciences, and then your registered youth apprenticeships, where they spend their last year of school working, and they are actually a paid employee of that particular company. Any questions about work-based learning experiences?
So I, I know that with the, the, the new accreditation standard, too, with the career path, if I'm saying that right, with the career planning, there is a component in there with the, I guess, the work, is it the work-based learning or the internship? So we're moving towards, is it twenty-twenty-two?
It's current ninth graders.
Current ninth graders. But there's a certain point that we have to have, like a complete...
That'd be part of the accreditation. I think it's twenty-twenty-two.
Is it twenty-twenty-two?
I think it's, it's a couple of years. They were building, building that out. So that didn't, attendance, chronic attendance, chronic absenteeism was there for this year, but the CTE piece is a couple of years.
So we're working towards that in other words.
Yeah. But this right here extends beyond that. That graduation requirement is the floor. We extend beyond the ceiling. For our students, they need to be better prepared so that they can be globally competitive. And so it's about giving them more than just what the baseline is for graduation. And so for the graduation requirement, we could do service learning and satisfy that. We want them to exceed far and beyond service learning.
And just what you're saying there is, I think, the general consensus that we've even had as a board about how do we market that, that the great work that's happening here, that we're not just doing base level, but we're going above and beyond, and that's one of the things, the reason why you want to send your student, your child, to public school.
Ms. Campson?
You mentioned when you looked at the health component, and it's tied to Amory High School. So my question is, each of our high schools have something. How integrated is this with, say, the fine arts program at Booker T., or with the military program, I think that's at, is that Lake Taylor?
Yeah.
Uh, in other words, each of, or is there, I, I see the integration of Amory.
Mm-hmm.
But what about the other high schools? So that they all fall together?
Well, it's more than Amory. The, the CTE is all the schools. So the health component is not just Amory. That sports medicine that you saw, it's everyone. Tradition, in the past, it was only Amory. Now, all of the schools have sports medicine. All five high schools have the sports medicine.
So have the high school focuses gone away?
The high school focus of...
No, tho, those are still there, but not all of them fell up under CTE. For example, the, the School of Leadership was under our JROTC programming, and where, when that one was started, Lake Taylor High School, that went beyond. Our CTE planned work here does not include the arts as part of it. So that was in, in another sector of how we support that. This is purely those, those areas that fall with under the CTE and, and work-based learning model. That's what this is. That's what this is about.
And what's being presented here is at all of the schools. This is, just think about, this is not just specialized just in certain schools, this is everywhere. This is middle school, this is high school. Your Perkins plan does not support the specialty programs, this is for all of the students. And right now, we have about eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-one number for student enrollment in CTE. Of which ROTC does now fall because that is part of the sixteen clusters. And so the sports medicine that was presented earlier, that is at all schools. All of those career clusters that you, that is available to all students. So it's not segmented, engineering STEM, work-based learning, those are all schools, including middle school. But of course, because of age, they're more service learning and mentorship and job shadowing.
So schools that don't fall directly under this for, for some specialty program, like fine arts at Booker T, that they're not supported through this at all?
I would keep it separate. I think specialty, specialty programs are one thing, and then this is something that's all within all five high schools and middle schools.
I, I understand that, I understand that it's in all the schools. I was just saying that she had mentioned Maury when she was talking about the health services. And, and therefore, I was wondering at the other schools, have, has there been some attempt to, to have them feed off each other to certain extents? And, and so that was my question at each of the high schools.
Whether or not they all work in collaboration?
Right, because the programs in some high schools are stronger than in others, the specialty programs. And I was thinking that would be a way to support each of those specialty programs.
When you think in terms of CTE, think in terms of English, math, social studies and science. It is required to be at all schools in a very high degree, and that's the same way with this. And so with Perkins, it is, it falls, excuse me, CTE falls under the code of Virginia. You are required to have at least eleven CTE courses at each of the schools, at least three different pathways. And so all schools have varying forms, but they're all of higher level. And when I mentioned Maury, because I brought up the health and medical sciences, I wanted to make sure no one thought I was just referencing Maury's EVMS program. This is the program that's outside of Maury, that's at all schools. So everything is, is available to all of the students. Do we work in collaboration? Yes, we do. For example, at Lake Taylor High School, you have the ROTC program. We work in collaboration with them, so we have their students taking cybersecurity, working together. If you have the leadership program at Norview High School, the leadership students take the engineering courses that are in CTE. At Maury, the students who may be in EVMS program, they take economics and personal finance, they take culinary, they take you name it. Or they'll come and take some other programs. At Booker T Washington High School, their fine art students are also cybersecurity students or social media marketing students. So there is no separation with CTE, everyone takes CTE. Every student in the state of Virginia must take and pass CTE before they graduate economics and personal finance. So we're part of all of the programs to be, to be honest.
So if we were to ever have a CTE high school, how would that impact this? Would these programs still remain in the schools or would it all go to a CTE high school?
The great thing is the CTE high school takes this and moves it to a whole nother stratosphere.
Right.
And it does that without sacrificing this. If you bring on a CTE.
So that was my question, so that, so what your answer is, is that this program would remain in the schools? Even if we moved ahead and had a CTE high school?
Yes, it doesn't sacrifice what you're having here. As long as you have a school operating, you still have to have a level of CTE there, middle and high school. That's in the state code. CTE takes, CTE high school takes it to a whole different level. You're extending so far beyond this that it's, it's really apples and oranges.
And, and, and the other piece with that is that we would not be replicating the heavy manufacturing labs and things at multiple sites. And that's where, again, currently we have those labs at NTC. And so a student who would be interested in that type of the industry, the trades in technology, would then express their interest through the CTE high school in order to access those. So we don't replicate those heavy industry labs in all of the high schools. But we don't take away the existing CTE programming and those courses will continue to evolve and expand.
So we have about ten more minutes left for this.
This is a, a slide for credentialing. It gives you an idea, just an example, there are three hundred approved for the state credentials that students can take. This is just an example of those that we do and how we fare in terms of students passing their credentials.
They get their credentials, are they getting job ready?
Yes, depending on what the job is. For example, if you're going into Microsoft and you take Microsoft Expert or Adobe Expert, then you're able to go into certain positions right away. If you're going into welding and you take AWS, that's an entry-level credentialing. And what we do is work with our advisory to ensure that our students have the right credentials that they can transition into the world of work or college or anywhere that they choose to go beyond high school. For example, certified pharmacy technician, these are states, these are national certifications. So once they get it, you're certified as a pharmacy technician, you can go anywhere as long as you have all the other packaging and be hired as one. Same thing with nursing, the National NCLEX, that's required for all nurses regardless of where you go for LPN. Our programs, we're working to get bridge programs so they can come from LPN, go into a bridge RN or go to a college and have advanced standing. So we're moving forward with that, yes.
My question's about the timeline, so if we're introducing the CTE early on at a younger, younger age, similar to what's been happening in some cases with AP classes that kids get to their junior year and they have most of their credentials or their credit, school credits. And then they, you know, kind of fail to understand why they should be there for their, you know, another, one more year. Do we, would, is there a possibility that we're gonna have the same situation with children who are on the CTE path?
No, because with this life, with work-based learning, I mean, students can finish things early. But say for instance, I have two bells or three bells available in my senior year. I can leave and do my clinicals for my health, medical sciences. I can go to work and still earn credit as a high school student. I can do dual enrollment where I spend part of my day at the university, moving on to CTE, part of my day in a work, a work environment. So there's many options that work well for students who advance earlier throughout their creden, throughout their college, excuse me, high school credits. And they can go on and start earning college credits. And the very last slide is someone asked, I think it was you, Ms. Smith, about credentialing beyond that, how do we evaluate? With Perkins funding and, and through the Department of Education, you are required to contact all of the students who graduated the year prior and see where they are now. Kind of where are they now? And you have to do it specifically for anyone who was enrolled and completed CTE in a sequence. And so for next month, we will be contacting all of the students who graduated in June twenty eighteen. This is the data from June twenty seventeen that we had to contact them last year. And you have to survey them, you have to contact them, you name it, however you contact them, there is a certain form you have to complete for each student that comes from the state. And as we get our information back, you are required to contact at least seventy-five percent or more. That's for every state, we normally do very well, we normally get about eighty-five to eighty-six percent. And we use our teachers and our, in schools in order to do that. What we found is, once you've contacted them, you send all that information to the state, they send you a report card about your completers. And for those who completed in June of twenty seventeen graduating class, they, we, they, the state found that sixty-five percent of our students who completed CTE went on to either higher education or post-secondary training, two-year, four-year, or an apprenticeship program of some sort or some sort of training program. We had about six percent that went on to the military. We had twenty-five percent who went on to work either in a full or part-time capacity and seven percent were others. They were no longer in school or no longer in the working environment.
I just want to emphasize that sixty-six percent of children are going on to more, either more certification or higher education, because a lot of the parents that I talk to are concerned with children being funneled into CTE, you know, taking on the CTE certification route versus the college prep route. And, and so I just want to emphasize this right now because I always say, someone can get a certification and then they can go on to college or, you know, and then become a business owner and they go, you know, go anywhere like we said. And so I think this really validates that yes, this is happening.
Well, with career technical education, it's college and career readiness, it's not college or career readiness.
But I'm telling you, a lot of parents don't let it.
And you know, as a country, we still struggle with what was vocational education for those children who couldn't do anything else. And trying to change that mindset that this really is about college and careers. And so, you, you know, I have, my older daughter was, was going to dental school and she did EMT in terms of getting patient care and all that, she ended up changing, taught for a while and everything else, but she used that as leverage, you, you know, throughout college. So you, you see a lot of students do that. That's also, the, the other part of, of the commentary sometimes we get is that because the requirements are so stringent for outcomes and opportunities around CTE, that not all students are getting in. You know, we hear people say, well, my students need a chance to work with their hands. They may need a chance to work with their hands, but to the Ms. Smith's point about a living wage, you've gotta bring something else to the table other than just your hands. And so that's where we, that integrated academics piece and all that brings it together to strengthen for all students.
And with CTE, it's hands-on and minds-on, so they're just working with their hands. If you look at the engineering platforms they have to do and, and programming, the algorithms alone, being able to do that. Nursing, you have to bring forth all the things you know from biology, even in cosmetology. And we always talk about the students, you have to know chemistry, you need to know acids and bases. You need to know different things from health and medical sciences. So it is a transition and you're right, we're working to change the mindset of the world from vocational to CTE. And I always remind everyone, when they speak of STEM, you're speaking about CTE, that, that is CTE. And unfortunately, in the past, it was for those who were not going to college. But as you see, the majority of our students go on. You look at our classrooms, they're filled with students with disabilities, but they're also filled with students who are gifted.
Okay, I'm gonna pause you for a second there, because we are really gonna try to wrap this up, Ms. Smith.
How, how do we or how can we use this to assist with improving our enrollment?
So we're constantly recruiting, you mean overall enrollment for the district?
Yeah, because like Ms. Martin said, a lot of people don't understand this in terms of being both career and educational ready. But just, I just have this belief if students understood, as well as parents, what the end game could be for them through the educational system, that more would be willing to stay a part of it and see it through. But if I'm here, and I don't know why I'm here, we lose people.
So, so a, a big piece of this gets, the companion piece of this, let me say, is that the level of dual enrollment we have with low and no cost for families. And the over thirty advanced placement courses that we offer as a district at no cost for folks. And so it's, it's telling that story over and over and over again. Every, every year, there, there are open house opportunities that we publicize a great deal across the city for folks to come to NTC and look at our other career and technical programs so that they can begin to understand that. And we see the aha moments when parents and students also come and they realize, oh wow, I didn't know that this is how I get to X that I wanted to do. And, and seeing that, and so we continue to push it out there. Like you said, the open, you have a couple of open houses at NTC.
Open houses, there are videos, there are different things, and just making sure everyone understands. A lot of times, like for example, the Girls in Engineering Program, everyone talks about, that's a CTE class, that's a CTE program. And the North Star Program, the AP, the AP Computer Science Principles classes, those are taught by CTE teachers, also math. So there's a variety of different things that a lot of folks don't realize it's CTE. If you go to Norview and you go to the leadership program, they're in the CTE classes, engineering. And so, and, and EVMS program, the EMR, EMT program, that's CTE classes. Booker T, that's CTE, there's not a program that we have in the division that's not CTE. Even the ROTC, that one at Norview, not taking credit for anything they've done, they've done it all. But if you pull it up, that's falls on the career and technical education at the federal and state level.
So for, for our agenda tonight, we have this item, this plan for adoption, for a vote. And are there any questions that you all have right now, based on what Ms. Goshen has described to us, that you would like answered before our discussion tonight, because we will be taking a vote on this plan?
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the reappropriation of the audited fund balance.
Yes, Ms. Ingram is, is coming to the table. Let me share one piece with the board. You may ask, wow, I haven't seen this before, and you are correct. This is the first time in five or six years, and Ms. Ingram will walk, walk us through this. Five or six years that we've actually had a fund balance to ask the city to reappropriate. Because historically, we, for the last, like I said, five or six years, have been directed to use the fund balance to close the budget gap for, for certain funds. And so I know Ms. Ingram was gonna mention, but she also met with the Audit Committee as part of our making this recommendation. And just the last opening comment I want to make, I, in the revenue sharing model with the city, the opportunity to request reappropriation is listed as, as one of the practices with that. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingram.
Good afternoon, everyone. Like Dr. Boone said, I'll be giving you, talking about our audited fund balance for two thousand and eighteen. The topics I want to discuss this afternoon is fund balance, what it is, why do we have a fund balance, the reappropriation requests and recommended expenditures. But prior to going through that presentation, like Dr. Boone said, I want to share some historical information with you in reference to fund balance and seeking reappropriation of those funds. And since Dr. Boone arrived here in Norfolk Public Schools, you often hear her talk about the structural imbalance that we have had in developing our budget, which meant that we will always carry forward money from one year to balance budget for the previous, for the next year. But that, that's not a good practice in that what you end up doing is there's, the, the next year, you have a budget gap. For instance, in two thousand and thirteen, we had carried forward a nine point nine million dollars to balance our two thousand and fourteen budget. So, but when we got to developing the budget for two thousand and fifteen, we had a nine point nine million dollar deficit because it was one-time funding. So we really should not depend on one-time funding to balance the budget. And we really have not been doing that for twenty, since, the last time was twenty seventeen that we did the carry forward piece. So for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, we have not been carrying forward and we've been balancing our budget. However, at the end of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, we have an audited unassigned fund balance of four point three million dollars. And like Dr. Boone said, on April the tenth, I met with Ms. Campson and Ms. Smith going over their, over the four point three million dollars, discussing whether the funds come from, what are we allowed to spend, and what can we do with the money? And we ended that conversation and what I'm presenting to you tonight are the recommendations from the Audit Committee when we were talking about as to recommendation for the board to request reappropriation from the city. Not advancing, did the battery? Yeah, okay, oops, I'm sorry, I got it. We both did it. Okay, fund balance is created or is increased when our revenue exceeds the fund, the expenditures we have for a fiscal year. For instance, if we receive three hundred thousand dollars in revenue, we only spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we have a fifty thousand dollars fund balance. There are several categories in fund balance, and I don't want to go through it to get very technical, but I want to highlight two here for you this afternoon. And the two are assigned fund balance, which is restricted or committed for specific purposes. And that is if we have open purchase orders at the end of the year, those funds need to be assigned. to be assigned such that when we, the expense is paid, we will have the funding to pay against that purchase order. The unassigned fund balance is what we'll be talking about tonight, is what we want to request reappropriation for. We, as a school district, we cannot legally carry forward a fund balance, so we would need to seek that reappropriation from City Council. Again, why do we have an unassigned fund balance this year? Our revenue exceeded our expenditures and all of our budgeted appropriation were not expended in personnel, which is attrition dollars, and in non-personnel. Last year, in 2018, we had a very challenging year because we had a lot of position vacancies due to hard-to-staff positions. You know, there were a state shortage in teaching positions. We also had hard-to-fill positions for bus drivers and other position throughout the district. So, with those attrition dollars, we had actually, at one point, I pulled how many position we had vacant, I did it like in mid-March of last year, and that particular point in time, we had like two hundred and twenty-six vacancies. And that's about five point six percent of our total staff. So, most of the dollars that we are seeing for attrition came from those vacant positions. We were in a much better position with filling position at the beginning of the school year this year, so we should not see that type of attrition savings.
I personally don't like the word savings.
Yeah.
Because it just makes the connotation as this word, saving money, but really, if those positions were filled, so I just, I just say attrition. It bothers me.
Can you repeat what you just said about the percentages of vacant positions?
When I pulled the data in like mid-March, we had two hundred and twenty-six vacancies.
That was March of 2018, last year.
Last year.
So, we started last year, as we, you know, shared with the board, over time, probably over eighty teaching vacancies when we started last school year. And so, throughout the year, that number got up as high of not only teaching vacancies, but bus driver vacancies and other positions to as high as that two hundred and twenty-eight. And that's how we, so that's how we ended up with these attrition funds, to not use savings. The attrition funds, because when you hire a long-term sub, there's not the benefits piece associated with it, the salary is not as high. And so, therefore, the overall expenditure with a long-term sub or someone filling in in a vacancy is lower than what the contracted position would have been.
Thank you.
No, I'm just, you said March of 2018. Our fiscal year starts July 1.
Seventeen. And ended June of 2018.
June, 2018. So, okay, that was on the tail end of that.
And it's a fluid number because you are hiring and people are leaving some mysteriously. Sometimes people in the pike are being hired but haven't completed the hiring process. So, on that particular day and time, vacancies were two twenty-six, but there could be some in the pike that hadn't been, had not completed the hiring process. So, it changes daily. So, what we are requesting the school board to seek approval for is the four point three million dollars of unassigned fund balance. And these are the recommendations. One point two million dollars of unassigned fund balance from unspent textbook funds. Each year, the state gives us textbook funds and there is a required local match, and we can only spend those dollars on textbook funds or associated instructional supplies that qualifies. And since we did not have any major textbook adoptions last year, we did not spend all of that money. So, what we are suggesting or recommending is that those funds be reappropriated to us to create a textbook fund, such that when textbook adoption comes due, I believe in science and English is due up in the next couple of years, then we will be able to draw from those textbook funds so we can do the adoption in one full year. In the past, we have always had to phase them in. So, by establishing this textbook fund, we can hopefully be positioning ourselves to do it in one year.
And let me say to the board, years ago, we did have an actual textbook fund. And so, I guess over time, it had gone away. And so, we think it's important because these funds are dedicated by the state for textbook use only, so we have to document that through the annual report to the state.
And then, too, we get, I guess you could say, approval from VDOE. We got a state superintendent's memo in June of 2022 that permits us to carry forward these funds. And actually, the city has to reappropriate those dollars. If we did not spend those funds for textbooks, the city has to reappropriate those dollars to us. And even if we don't spend it that following year, according to statute, we can maintain it separately such that when the need arises, we can spend it. That's why we're requesting the textbook fund.
But dedicated again for textbook and digital materials that go along with textbooks, that type of thing.
Digital textbooks does qualify.
And since this is dealing with something in the future, and we have to consider inflation and all that when it comes to cost, will this one point three, and I'm rounding, will one point three be sufficient for the anticipated textbook purchase that we're going to have? Or should this be higher?
No, this is what we did not spend in 2018. In 2019, the state gave us additional textbook funds every year. It's one of the funding revenue line items that we get. So, every year, they fund so much for textbooks.
So, this is added to that amount?
Well, this year's amount will be added to that.
Added to that one, since we don't have a major adoption, we will probably end up pretty much in the same position.
And being able to do a full adoption in a year, not have to phase it by grade levels is huge.
How does this play into, I guess, some overall discussion of paper versus digital? Like, I guess tablets or something like that in textbooks?
Well, the tablets, this one won't cover tablets. This would only cover access, so you pay for.
Oh, the subscription type.
Right, right. You pay for the subscription, you pay for a paper heart book. There's, you also have to pay for the digital textbook.
The other three point one million dollars, we are requesting to be reappropriated for insufficient funding for furniture, equipment, and technology purchases for our five PPEA schools. And what I want to do now is just to walk you through, since we have a lot of new board members, to give you some historical perspective on the five schools. Several years ago, the school board voted to turn over the construction of our schools to the city. So, the city chose the PPEA route. PPEA is Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act. So, they decided to build five schools for us, Southside STEM Academy, Camp Estella, Richard Bowlin, Larchmont, Ocean View, and Cap Allen. The Cap Allen one was a little bit different in that we also got a DOD grant, the federal government paid eighty percent of that, so the city put up the other twenty percent. Then the full contract of that was awarded to SB ballot, which included everything. They were supposed to build the facilities, furnish it, and everything. But when we started looking at the furn, I'm sorry, I'm not going to go yet, the furnishing piece, discussions were taking place and somehow, I wasn't part of discussion, but what ended up being was the furniture fixtures and equipment was pulled out for Norfolk Public Schools to handle. And I believe some of that came from looking at the contracts that possibly we had in place and whether or not a private industry could piggyback on our contracts, and I think they could not. So, discussion ensued that perhaps Norfolk Public Schools should do the one to, be the one to purchase the furniture fixtures and equipment. So, with that in place, I don't know how technology came into that arena because it started out being equipment. And if we are buying computers, I would say, yes, that's equipment. But when you're talking about the wiring, I consider wiring as infrastructure, but they say we had to do it all with those negotiations and that we had to do all of that piece. And when we started looking at it, initially, what happened was they pulled out about six point six million dollars from the overall contract to go towards the furniture and fixtures, equipment, and technology. We soon found out that that was insufficient to build those five schools. There was discussions between school board staff and city staff acknowledging that there was a shortfall and that the city said that they will cover the shortage. But now, everyone who made that agreement is gone.
Transitioning to school.
Transitioned school and city side.
Leadership, so.
And when Dr. Boone came on board, we did have a discussion with the current city manager, sharing with them the same thing, that there was a shortfall and with the projection of what that shortfall may look like. And then, at some point, I think he said that the city did not have funding to make up the difference. So, what we then did was we went back and looked at old CIP projects that had not been closed on the books, on both the city side and the school side. And this project way back in 2000 or something, and there was a project for like one point two million dollars. And the city agreed to give us that to go towards the furniture and equipment. But that still wasn't enough for the five schools. So, funding is still insufficient to do that. And right now, you know, we were kind of like caught, you had a building, we didn't have sufficient funds to furnish it, and you cannot not furnish the buildings, so we won't be able to use it. So, we did what we had to do to furnish all of the buildings. We have spent like two point eight million dollars over what was given to us plus the one point two cash, and we have not completed Phase Two of Cap Allen yet. So, the recommendation is we use this three point one million dollars, which is basically paying ourselves back because we have already spent the money out of the cash flow and the cash balances.
I see the question on Ms. Martin's face. Yeah.
So, there's two things. One, we can't be going off of hearsay, like there should be documentation of this commitment, right?
There should have been.
Should have been, yeah.
I came in at a time that we were finishing the first two PPEA schools, Southside STEM and Richard Bowlin. And the prior city manager and I talked about it. He said, you know, we realized that the six million dollars was not enough, but we're going to support you through this. Of course, he left. So, city manager Smith and I, that was in our first meetings, this was one of the things that I had on the agenda, and we've continued to talk about how we get there. And so, it's clear, so as Ms. Ingram said, she wasn't the CFO, I wasn't the superintendent, Smith wasn't the city manager, and so, this is where we are with this gap.
But a lot of the support administration has not changed, so there should be someone there who knows something.
A lot of it did. And so, like I said, it's acknowledged that we can document that the six point six million dollars was pulled out from the original contract to support this. It's the discussions of the six point six not being enough, total dollars to support all of the schools is where there's not documentation.
Okay, so, but also, the other issue that is not connecting well for me is that what were we going to do had we not had this attrition money? I mean, because Camp Allen is going into its second phase, what was the plan?
We still would have been going back to try to work with the city to see if there were any other capital POs that may not have been closed out. We have tried to squeeze every dollar, and this is what got to this point. We agree. I mean, we didn't know that we were going to have this. So, our discussions all year with the city manager and his team is, what do we do about this? And, you know, again, everything that we're sharing here, the conversations that we've had with them, so we aren't putting anybody up under the bus, these were our realities. We didn't know how we were going to get there, but we also knew as a district, we were going to have to make it happen because you can't have a school building that's sitting empty because we didn't have the FFNE there. And so, fortunately, because of the new revenue sharing agreement and the fact that the two point seven cents of the ten cent tax increase raised our base by five million dollars, and we were able to share three million dollars in the fourteen line items, that's how we were able to get to a place that, wow, this is why the recommendation is how do we take care of the PPEA work over anything else? Because outside of that, it would have still been a struggle. We would have been trying to figure out how we would do it. Because even with buildings we vacate, we have to return, turn those back to the city, turn those over to the city for disposition. So, it's not like we could even sell a building and fill this gap.
I'm just.
Yeah, I agree. It's a quagmire. And we have, you know, to city manager Smith's credit, you know, we've been trying to work on this but did not have a solution, so.
It's just unfortunate. I would like to see, you know, and I hear you've been working on it, it's our first time, my first time hearing about this, that I didn't know this has been going on. And I really would like to see all avenues exhausted, you know, with negotiations with the city so that they can come up with the funding that they said they would for us? Because this is for, or three million dollars that could go to, you know, our arts program or, you know, other programs in our schools.
Let me remind you, these are one-time funds.
Right.
These are one-time funds. If we put these funds toward anything that's related to positions or something like that.
Well, not positions, I understand that, but I mean, to enhance, but I mean, to enhance the environment or build, you know, toward.
Other maintenance projects.
Yes, something that, there's plenty of things I'm sure that.
Was this brought up to the Audit Committee when you all had the discussion?
Yes. Could I address this? Because when we met and we talked about a number of different things, I mean, I was concerned about the lighting that has to go into all of our high schools with our start. I was concerned about the loss of funding for supplies for the fine arts that was taken away after we added a teacher, did not understand that we were giving up their supplies to get another teaching position. Talked about buses that are a hundred thousand dollars each and the fact that we have an aging fleet. My understanding, when I left the room, was that the different options would be here and the school board would be making that decision. That's why I was a little surprised because when I walked out the door. You didn't have that? No. Well, I certainly had that, that I walked out the door that we had a number of options that we had discussed for the board to then make a decision on. So, that's what I thought. I was surprised when I saw one of them.
And technically, we did bring two options. One is the funds for the textbook and funds to use.
Well, the textbooks were non-negotiable to begin with. I wasn't even looking at the textbooks. I'd already subtracted that because I knew where that had to go. But my understanding was, because we're going to have a serious problem with lighting on athletic fields with the new start time next year, and my understanding is it takes about nine weeks to do a school, and we have five high schools. So, that's a concern.
It's a year from next year.
And also, the buses, although I think the city's supposed to be helping us with that.
They have helped us a great deal with buses, including allow, advance allocation of the annual one million dollars that allowed us to access the federal grant that brought us in additional buses because we got that diesel grant. So, the city has really supported us with that.
Right, and I understand that, but still, my understanding was that there were a number of options that we brought up, and when I walked out the door, that those options would be here for the board to make some decisions about. That's, I mean, if we're just bringing it into rubber stamp, then why are we even listening to it?
Ms. Smith and then Mr. Clayton.
I didn't have the same understanding. I do remember the option that I brought up, and I remembered it not being the most valuable option. And in my notes, I wrote four point three textbooks, one point three, I'm rounding, and one-time needs, facilities, technology, three million dollars.
Yeah, fighting for the athletic fields.
I didn't understand that to be one of the options that would be presented to the board today.
I did.
Mr. Clayton?
I remember you asking that question and us having discussion about it, but I understood these two to be the options that would come before the board.
So, three million dollars to really to fill a hole that we've already spent. So, I guess in some respect, it doesn't really matter what we do other than we need to backfill it because we've taken it from somewhere else to pay for this.
Like, look, think of it as, it's not a grant, but think of it like a grant wherein you make. Wherein you, you make expenditures and you seek reimbursement. In this instance, we made the, the expenditures. There's no place to seek the reimbursement from. So to make ourselves whole, to move forward out of twenty nineteen in a better position. That we are made whole now. If we do this, we on good footing and move forward with.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand it. And typically on a grant, they tell you upfront, this is what you gotta do. But if we didn't have this situation, we'd have a deficit in somewhere. We'd be pulling these dollars from somewhere.
Well, are we gonna pay for the lighting? Is the lighting a budget for next year?
But, but I, I still have the floor.
Hold on, Mr. Clay, Mr. Clay's gonna speak first.
My follow-up on that one was, and I've asked about it, so we have Lake Taylor Middle School and the funds. Cause I thought that some of the funds would be coming out of here to do, or is that coming from the CIP?
From this, so let, may I answer that?
Okay.
We, you recall that in the CIP, there was two million dollars, uh, that had been earmarked for a roof. Planning for a roof at Poplar Halls. By not, uh, continuing to use Poplar Halls, that's the money that allows us to go forward. Uh, with some of the work at Lake Taylor. And so, we, we also, as a matter of fact, um, in, at our next meeting. Tracy Richter will, w- we will be talking about where we are with next steps in the planning for all of this transition. But we had looked at that roofing, those roofing dollars to earmark. Now, when Tracy Richter, uh, talks with us next week, we, the, the board had consensus for him to do project management around the school's start time. And so, he's going to share with the board the, the way in which he's structuring that work. Priorities that were set around things, and then what would be some recommendation for expenditures and things. With the closeout of everything being before the board by November, so that we can impact budget planning. And, and all of that. But so, that's what Trace is gonna talk about next week. That's why the lights weren't part of this, because we weren't pulling out and piecemealing that part. He hasn't even come forward to us with, with certain recommendations.
So, two million dollars, just something clear, so two million dollars is what we're earmarking for Lake Taylor?
Whatever, whatever the needs are, right, I mean.
We're gonna do things over two years there, but we had that initial two.
I, I know for two years, but for this initial, over the summer, to make sure that this school is prepared for in the, in the fall. Two million dollars is the number.
That we're working with, but we're not sure we can do, some of that is larger work that we may not be able to do this summer, we may have to do the next summer. So we would start the planning.
I'm not talking about the work, I'm just saying the number. So two million is what we're saying that we're gonna, we're gonna work with.
What I'm saying, what we are saying is we have funding identified.
Funding identified for the roof.
For, for, um, Lake Taylor transitioning.
Okay.
Cause it's, it's coming from the Poplar Halls roof. Cause we won't need the roof anymore. We put that project on hold a couple of years ago because of the anticipation of possibly closing Poplar Halls. So that's why it wasn't done, and we kept doing the patchwork.
Ms. Basine?
Um, uh, oh, do you have a question?
No.
No, I, I was just gonna say, you answered, um, I was just gonna comment that. We were expecting, you know, a recommendation to come forward through the head planning, and I realized, um, I think I had responded over, over the break. Um, after receiving a series of emails, uh, from Steve Sett Miller around the lighting. And so, it just, Dr. Boone already stated what I was gonna state.
So this is what I would like. I, I'm not comfortable with this being on the consent agenda for today. Um, I, I wanna have some more information on the facilities, funds that were pulled out. In order to, um, pay for the FFNE that we have. Um, which, why we're in this hole right now, I want that documented. And then I would like to see, um, the funds that we have, uh, that we would reallocate. What they would be filling the hole of. Um, I'd like to see that first, before we take a vote on this tonight.
Okay, when you say see what the, you mean you want to see the actual purchases?
Wherever you.
Of what was put into the schools?
I wanna see, wh- where you had funds. You had mentioned something about a one point two million dollar item.
Remember, um, s- about a year or so ago, I presented to the school board. Where we had gone through this process of looking at old CIP pu- projects. And, um, the accounting staff at the time worked with the city staff as to what funding we had left available. And, um, reconcile our books together. We came to an agreement that any, any outstanding old projects that were still on the city side of the books. That was two eleven and earlier, two thousand and eleven and earlier. Um, we got to keep that money, that's where the one point two, that was a way of finding additional monies to cover the FFNE. Anything twenty twelve and beyond, we got to keep that money to continue with our deferred maintenance projects. So, that's the deferred maintenance piece. That's part of what will be presented when we talk about, I think, next week, the CIP pu- budget for twenty twenty. I can give an update as to where we are on all CIP budgets.
I think that would be good, but I'm still not ready to move forward with this tonight, based on the information that we have.
And I think, would that be at that time that you will be sharing the carryover money from the previous years that amounts up to what, eight million or so? I didn't bring my notes, but as I recall.
That will give the status of CIP from twenty twelve to twenty nineteen.
So they'll see the, how much left, how much carryover money.
It's not carryover. What it is, is, is fun, there are projects that have been identified. There are projects where there are purchase orders being issued. There are projects that are in design work where the money have not been spent yet. But there has been, a project has been identified for everything that we were talking about. It's just that we haven't spent the dollars yet.
I need, I need to review my notes, cause it seemed to me that there was money that exceeded, that had not yet been allocated yet.
No, we, I think what you were talking about, it was available budget. And what available means is, I look at what my budget is, I look at what I've spent to date, and this is what's available left to spend. So if I have outstanding purchase orders, or I, or I'm in the design phase, or I'm, I'm in the process of, um, securing quotes. That's available dollars to spend. So it's not that it's savings, it is available dollars to spend.
I wouldn't say that it was saved, but it was my understanding that it was available.
It is available to spend for those projects that have been identified.
So, so then, that's what I'd like to have the board see, is the balance of exactly how much money there was and exactly what it's gonna be allocated for. So that we can see if it zeros out.
That's what we do annually, and so in agenda planning, we had talked about how we bring that CIP.
But it does zero out. I'm sorry for cutting you off, it does zero out. That, that's what we looked at, that's what the committee looked at.
I'd, I'd like to have.
So we need all of us to look at, we need all of us to look at the same thing.
We can bring back all of the available documentation that we can find, but, um.
I mean, I have a copy of the city ord- ordinance where they pulled the six point six million dollars out of S.B. Ballard's contract. Um, there were no documentation except an email where they sent us a check for one point two million dollars. Uh, from the old CIP budget, there weren't any other documentation other than that. So that's the revenue that we have received from the city. So I, I mean, I, I can give you those two things.
And I will go back and see if there's anything, uh, also in the superintendent's files. But, uh, just like Ms. Ingram, um, my foray into this was the fact that we didn't have enough money. Um, and what I was told, and of course, this is where we are.
Is there a timeline that we have to go to the city by in order to have these funds, um, re-appropriated?
Ideally, I would like it to be the city council to vote this year before we cross over into twenty twenty.
Okay.
So, and which means, there has to be a vote. I don't know, I know they meet next month, I don't know what their schedule is for June. So if we don't have a vote to get it to them prior to their last meeting of the year, we, we won't get there.
Process fiscal years and then, I think that creates a problem.
Dr. Gabriel, just, uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, I may not recall it correctly, but I think that it wasn't the school board that voted. The PPA was the council that voted, uh, the PPA in November of twenty fourteen. Cause if you recall, I think the feeling at that time was, is that the board was kinda moving slow. And I think a resolution got drafted, and the city council decided to enter into the PPA relationship with, uh, Ballard. What formed out of that was this team, the whole conversation about the team. That, and I think that the bottom line that we came away with, and just saying, in particular, I know Dr. Gabriel and I, was, we don't wanna do that again. And part of the reason why is what we are discussing today. Because we didn't have, um, sufficient attention from the school side on all the things that were needed to take care of, of schools. So even as we go back and if we unpeel this onion again, I do think it's important that the, that the full board and the new board know. That it was not a fun time, and we did come out of that saying that if we ever did it again, we would do it, uh, differently. We are fortunate that because of the, um, budget action and the, and the collaboration that has occurred. The city manager and the superintendent, uh, that we're in a position to do something. So, I just wanna put that there and, um, just, just mention that before we end up going down a rabbit hole of trying to. Fight over the money.
And I'm not saying this isn't a good place for the money.
Oh, no, no.
Well, what I'm saying is, that the board needed to hear different options, that, that, I think the lighting is a big deal.
I'm not, I wasn't even.
How we're gonna be ready to have a change in start times if our children are playing in the dark.
Well, my, my only res- I really wasn't responding to you directly, but my, since you mentioned that. I just think philosophically, we've got to come to a point where, um, we ask the administration to review these things. They have certain level of experience and expertise that they're dealing with every day. They're just making recommendations to us, we don't have to accept it.
Well, and that's what I'm saying.
But, but if we, without the benefit of everything. Uh, it'll, it'll take the board a significant amount of time to try to do all this on our own. I'm not saying that we have to rubber stamp anything, but I do think we have to give some consideration to the work that's been put into it. And the work that your committee has done.
Ms. Martin. I just have, I have a clarifying question, cause I was on the board then, but was the, this PP, is it EA or A?
EA.
EA. So, part of that, was that when the board decided to turn the, the schools, the, the facilities over to the city for management? Is that part of it?
Not for management, for construction.
Construction?
There's no turnover management.
Okay, so that was part of it, okay.
I would just use the language, my own language, I don't think we ever agreed to turn it over. It's just something that was, had momentum, it moved, some decisions were made. And some promises were made to administration, administration, don't worry about it, we'll get to it. And then, I just recall it as Dr. Boone came in, I remember one of the first things she said was, you can't function that way.
We brought it to her attention, actually.
Exactly, absolutely.
We brought it to her attention because there was such a lack of items being done in writing.
Right, and I think from, I can't.
Where is this, though? I would like to see that.
Where is?
The PPEA agreement.
The resolution?
Yeah, the resolution.
Uh.
The city council.
Yes, I think it was November twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
City council adopted it, I remember at one point, cause I think.
I'm sure it's right there in your laptop.
No, I, I know. It might take me two minutes. I just remember at some point, uh, to think Attorney Cloud sent us a email, cause Attorney Pischko had drafted something, and it was going on the city council's docket. And we didn't even get a chance to really engage with it, it was done and it was voted on. I just remember that piece of it. But I will.
And so I learned that history from everybody, yeah.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair, I mean, just based on the general discussion in there, I mean, I. I'm not coming to this hole, but, um, I like to just kinda, if it's possible, with the additional information we're asking for. Um, that we just table this to next week, and then we can make a decision if possible. I know, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting it on the consent agenda today. Um, and then if we can just get the additional, um, documents there, and if we need to have some additional conversations. But, I, one of the concerns that I have, even, you know, representing Ward Three, or, but just being a school board member as a whole. But we've seen things come before us, particularly when I look at Book Two, Washington High School, we talked about this baseball field. We've, you know, there's cracked sidewalks, and, and I know, sitting on the facilities committee, there's a number of things that are out there for us. Um, you know, that we need to, you know, get some attention on. So I just, you know, I, I know that we're gonna have to do something with this here, but I also wanna have a, a discussion about those other things. Um, that, you know, that are important.
And that did come up, um, in our discussion in the committee meeting about all of these, not capital repairs, but the little repairs. That we see in our schools that just go on year after year after year. The, the skylight at, at, at crossroads, the, the twenty years we've been trying to get a sidewalk to connect the two schools at Little Creek. Just all those kinds of little things to have a, a fund that we could start bringing some of that stuff up to date and address. I mean, twenty years, uh, twenty-five years ago, when I was at Little Creek, trying to get a sidewalk put in. I mean, and it's still not there, so.
All right, Ms. Smith, and then we're gonna wrap up the discussion.
Dr. Ingram, could you share with the board those, some of the examples of how the funds would be used? That the anticipated plan for some of them, just so that they can understand.
You mean the three point one, or some of the things that we did at year end?
Yes, the, um, yeah, the three point one.
Well, the three point one is really paying ourselves back. We, we, we have spent two point eight million dollars above the revenue that the city gave us. We also had a little bit of revenue with E-rate money that came back to those schools. So, we spent our own dollars of two point eight million dollars. So we have a hole ourselves in our cash flow and other things with NPS. And the longer we go without paying ourselves back, we're gonna have that issue, so.
And also, Ms. Ingram, what's the amount that we anticipate we still need for phase? And we'll put all this together, um, for phase, phase two of the Camp Allen also.
Two, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand to add to the two point eight I was talking about. So it's, it's gonna almost come up to three point one million. And ironically, when we first had the conversation, Dr. Boone, I don't know if you remember or not, with, uh, Mr. Smith. And I think, um, the deputy, Ms. Weitzel. When we estimated, it, it was somewhere around three to four million dollars. Cause on average, I think Capistella is the one that is the larger school. So basically, that one point two million dollars added to what they gave us, fully funded Capistella. But the other schools, on average, it was eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars over the money that they had allocated, so.
We spent over two million dollars for a school. Because again, as, as Ms. Ingram indicated, the wiring infrastructure also fell into the technology piece.
Right, and that total is, is about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars was the infrastructure wiring piece.
And the previous board also knows we paid the electric bill during the construction, so we won't even go there.
I mean, so this is what we need before our next work session. We need to have, um, the, um, the, the funds that are gonna be backfilled with this three point, um, with the three point one million. Um, what are those funds gonna be backfilled? Um, you know, you know what, I understand where I'm at, okay? And then, what I'd like to know is, where did you pull the funds from in order to pay for the FFNE for the other remaining schools?
Here again, it comes out of the big cash flow pot.
Okay.
It's, it's, we, we pay the bill from the cash account. And there, we just haven't replenished our cash account.
So I just wanna know where those funds are gonna get put back to?
The cash account.
Right, but we'll, we'll.
It's on a sign, right?
It's an unrestricted cash account, no grants, anything like that, it's just.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll put it all together in a package for the board.
Okay, all right. And I don't have a problem with getting a vote done on that day, so that way we can get it to city council, and they can vote on it. Cause it looks like maybe their last meeting might even be in May, so I don't mind expediting that.
And you also wanted a copy of the ordinance where they pulled the cash from the Ballard contract, I believe. I have a copy.
I think everybody should have a copy of that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together, we'll put together a packet of everything that, the historical pieces that we can put our hands on. And any of the pieces that we have facilitated since we've been working together on it.
That would be really helpful.
We'll, we'll put together what we have.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you very much. Uh, okay, so that wraps up our workshop session here. We're gonna go ahead and go into closed session. Do I have a motion on the floor to go into closed executive session?
Madam Chair, move that we go into closed session.
A second.
Okay, okay, now with the one point two for the textbooks. Mr. Clayton, in whose second?
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin.
Move that members of the school board go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A.
Just a second, just for, now I'm looking, we are only disputing the three point one, right? The textbook funds, we didn't really have a discussion about it, okay, go ahead.
Move that members of the, uh, school board go into closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A. Of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information. are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for, A, discussion or consideration of prospective candidate for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public School pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is consideration of the personnel docket of this date. B, the discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is consideration of the student support docket of this date. C, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion refer to advice of counsel regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student support actions identified above. The vote, Ms. Basine?
Aye.
Ms. Camson?
Aye.
Mr. Clayton?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Thank you.